This is the Library Board of Trustees of the Southwood Public Library. It's Tuesday, February the 8th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. In attendance tonight, we'll go around the room.
Jamie, fast, Michelle.
Maria Gallo.
Cindy Warner.
And Blair.
Jan Bauder.
Michael McCann. Public comments, I don't see any members in the public here unless it might be on Zoom.
Nope, I've got, I've got nobody on Zoom.
Okay, so we'll move on to communications.
Can you just fill your last name?
G A L O O, Jessica White.
And she also approves today.
There you go, yeah, I'm by that one, thank you.
Okay, so communications, I am still working on emergency policies. Waiting to hear from the school resource officer about joining the training with the teachers and we'll get everybody in on that. But it's gonna be slow going writing the policies with everything else going on, but they're in the works. We are having a staff meeting on Zoom on next Wednesday. I need to send them the link. Just to get everybody together, it works much better on Zoom, so that way people don't have to like come in here. Cause we do it on Wednesday mornings when we're closed, so people don't have to come in here and then come back later. So we're having a staff meeting just to check in with everyone, see how things are going. I try to do this quarterly, so we can just get a feel for what needs to be worked on, what needs to be fixed and also it's going good. And also, as you can see when we get to the statistics, to give everybody a big pat on the back, cause it's been really great, so. We have that coming up, March 9th, we are hosting the Crater Westfield Chamber of Commerce After Five Get Together for Businesses. So we're gonna tie that in with the LSTA grant and just have some resources. Hopefully try to spread the word about some of our programs and services. So we'll, and we are expected to get hors d'oeuvres. So I don't know how fancy my hors d'oeuvres are going to get, but we will have something. So that will be March 9th. After 5, so she says it runs like 5 to 7:30, 7. So that'll be a good networking chance. Molly in the kids' room has, she's working on creating education kits. So the first couple she has available are Motion, Basic Math Skills, and Magnets. And when I checked in with her yesterday to get a feel for number one, where I could find them, because there's nothing worse than the teacher asking for, do I find this? I said, I don't know, so where I can find them and all were out except one, so that's great.
I got magnets, what were the other ones?
Basic Math Skills in Motion. So we have three right now, and each kit has some hands-on activities, books, and DVDs. And she's kind of aiming them for at-home learners, teachers, rainy day afternoon, something to do to work on. And she has some coming up, she's working on an early literacy one, an art one, and a coding one. So she'll have more coming up very soon.
Early literacy, art, and coding.
And coding. And then in our travels in the reference department, well, we're having a local history, I don't know if anyone saw my picture. At least they didn't pick a really horrible one, sometimes it's like.
Yeah, no, that was.
We made the, we made the front page.
You made it above the fold.
And below, there's a little bit below the fold too.
But it just, will people see the paper?
Yes, yes, so February 22nd, 6:30 to 8:00 drop-in, we're just gonna do local history open house. So I'm just gonna pull a bunch of stuff from our local history collection, have resources for people. And Pat is coming from Historical Society and she's bringing, it'll be a surprise. So it should be really fun, but um, in our travels getting ready for it, I found this really great map of the cemetery. And it's kind of all, it's just been folded up in a binder and I would love to get it framed. I talked to a framing company, it's about $400 to $450. So.
I'm so sorry, is the door closed?
No, it's up, do you need a close?
No, I just need to know if the stomping is for my children. I'm so sorry.
Nobody's screaming for you yet, so okay, I'm out there. Maybe quiet is, is a bad sign, I know. Um, it's four feet by two feet, so it's pretty big, but I was thinking, across from the restroom space, is that that size? Maybe a little bit smaller than that, but still.
It has to be a custom type thing.
Yeah, it has to be a custom type thing. But I was thinking, across from the restrooms, we have all that open space, where I pulled down some of the old maps. And I thought that might be a nice feature to put there. So I was thinking of using state aid money to just get it framed nicely, cause it's a shame that it's kind of just sitting in a folder. But there's no good way to display it really, you know, you can't laminate something that big and laminating isn't always the best option. So I was gonna look into framing it, cause it might be a nice piece to have up on the wall. So if that, if that sounds okay to you guys, I talked to a West Springfield company and that's the quote he gave me, just without seeing it first. Like 404, 400 to 450, so I've never custom framed something before, so I mean.
That, that size.
And that's about it, to frame something.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, a friend of mine advised me to think of framing as furniture for your wall, right?
So. Yeah, this, this will be like a nice, cause it has all of the plots and they're all numbered and it has all the details of the cemetery. And they're all numbered corresponding to a binder we have, so you can look up the number and the person or the person to the number, so it's really, really nice. And nobody's gonna see it folded up in a, in a little binder, so yeah, I'm gonna look into getting that, cause I think that would be a nice feature piece for that wall there. Okay, and that's, that's all I have for communications.
Okay, let's move on to the director's report.
Yeah, we'll just note for the reporting that we will have the January meeting minutes at the March meeting. And so everybody has the statistics, we are going strong again. So since July, we hit over 4,000 circulations a month. And in January, we had 4,646, which is pretty phenomenal.
What's up, baby? It's going to be an hour. You have 55 more minutes. Where's Jamie? Please watch your brother and do not ask strangers to watch him for you. I'm sure that everyone in the library is very nice, but.
Oh, yes, of course, yeah, you never know. Yeah, so we've, we've been going strong for over 4,000 circulations.
I have that, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, no worries. January was 4,646, which is really great, we never reached that high unless it's like a summer month, when the kids are out of school. So for January, that's pretty fantastic.
That's more than double last year.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean, last year, we really can't, we can't really go the last couple of years looking at anything, but um, you know, going back before the pandemic, I mean, we really didn't hit that unless it was a summer. So that's, that's pretty.
Agwam still closed?
Agwam is open in the senior center, we did see a rush of Agwam people, maybe a couple months ago when they first closed, but it's kind of trickled down. So these are mainly, you know, our regulars. We signed up 27 new cards in January, so I mean, it's, it's great, we've been very busy.
Agwam doesn't expect to reopen until probably May or later.
Yeah, that's terrible. I think we're doing okay in the senior center. Yeah, I mean, so I would say, I would say maybe a little bit of it at Agwam, you can never really tell, cause I can't tell if they were Agwam people from before this or new. But I mean, even if they are, a lot of people are like, wow, this is my first year, I'm coming back.
My brother's coming a lot here, because the Agwam's closed. He uses CW Mars a lot, so it's easy for them to come here, pick things up instead of going to Springfield or Westfield or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, so even if we are getting Agwam people, I mean, they very well may be new repeat customers. So, yeah, things are going, are going very well.
What happened to that one?
Mold, yeah, it had a water leak and there was mold and. And then the second page is just kind of a snapshot of, we're kind of keeping track of the evening statistics as well.
So now we'll move on to all business.
All business, so I'm still working on the LSTA grant, we finally ordered, I think I mentioned this, it feels weird since we met later last month, so I feel like things haven't happened as much. But um, we ordered papers and chairs for the study spaces, those should be coming in in the next month. So that'll be nice to have those in use. We did go ahead, as discussed last time, and do a line feed upgrade that was active February 1st, and we haven't had any connectivity issues with CW Mars since. So it's, it's been, it was money well spent, it was needed, especially with our increase in number of transactions for circulation, it's made a big difference. And for new business, we are currently working on the Shirtlift Children's Services Grant. Molly and Heather and Dana are looking into some now, some new technology, like new iPads and stuff for the children's and teen section.
So I need you to repeat what that was.
It's Shirtlift here, cause the spelling is Shirtlift Children's Services, yeah.
Thank you.
So new, new iPads, maybe some new seating, some new coding technology things for the kids' department. And that is due March, the beginning of March, I think it's March 1st, so we'll be finishing that up. I just finished and submitted our grant for the Sarah Gillette Services for the Elderly. I requested a couple hundred dollars for, we have like reading magnifying, they're, I don't know what they're called, you know, they're like big magnifying glasses for reading and they're 10 plus years old, so they're not in the best of shape, so I put in a grant to just try to get a couple more of those. Just a kind of, a couple different types of technology to assist people with reading that can just be part of our library of things that people can take home. So those grants are in the works, are you all set with this?
Yep, I need you to repeat about the lamps.
Yes, yeah, so um.
I'm sorry, I typed fast.
No, and I'm a fast talker, I tend to ramble really badly.
Thank you.
When Mike was interviewing me for the local history article, I'm like, please tell me if I need to slow down, because I can go and I go fast.
Alright, so you wanna get lamps?
Yeah, well, they're, they're, they're magnifying glasses, different types of assistive devices for reading essentially. So there's one that you can kind of clip onto your desk and read downwards to something on a flat surface, there are some that are like more magnifying glasses. And there are some that are like an eight and a half by 11 clear magnifying, like you can just put down flat on a flat face, more like a newspaper as opposed to a book. Good? Yes. Okay. Yeah, so we, after I submitted our budget for fiscal year 2023, I did hear back from Jim, who's the IP department for the town. Yes, so they are, and I, the technology, it's basically what, what they want to do is Dave, David is the new maintenance director. And they want to kind of centralize the HVAC. So what it comes out to be with this new technology and how they wanna do that is about $365 a month. So trying to figure out, I'm trying to get in touch with Laura in accounting to figure out how that is going to play in our budget. What line item we're putting it under.
$365, is that for the whole town?
No, that's for us, that's for us each month.
What's the current HVAC cost a month?
We don't, it's nothing that we pay out of our budget.
Yeah, we, we've never had this before, so what do you get for?
Basically, from, from my understanding, there's that the HVAC system, we've, we've had issues over the past couple months, where it's like, we can't control our own heat. So we have to call Town Hall to get them to turn up the heat, but there's been an issue with our IP address keeps changing. And they can't connect to our heat from there.
Cause it used to be that they could sit with a notebook or a desktop in the basement of Town Hall and see what your temperature is and move you up or down or do anything.
Yeah, so now they're trying to get it onto some new technology that, and there, there's something, there, the different town buildings, different ones use different systems or technologies, so they're trying to get everybody on the same.
I know they're trying to do that with, with the security system, there's three or four different vendors, and trying to get it down to one or two.
Yeah, and from my understanding, this, this also plays a part in it as well, so. Yeah, because when, and when the IP address kept changing, they had trouble connecting, they had to have Jim come over and work on it. And this will fix that, but it's $365 a month.
I don't understand why it's suddenly becoming the library's responsibility.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying, my next step is trying to talk to the accountant and see, you know, okay, this is the price, but is this coming from our budget? How is, how is this, how is this going to work? It sounds like it's going to come from our budget, but if it does, that's going to throw off.
Yeah.
Our.
A lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're talking like $4,000 a year.
Right, to just be able to.
More than that for $365 a month.
Yeah.
To control the heat remotely? And that's like.
Yeah.
Isn't that the wrong way to work?
It just, we've never had that before.
Yeah.
Yeah, not that much more, your math is pretty good, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I mean, I have, I have the business order that comes down to 365, so I'm, I'm going to try to talk to Laura and get an idea of, because when Jim brought this over to me, he hadn't spoken to Laura yet in accounting. And I've, I've been trying to get ahold of Laura to just kind of see what is going on with this, like how it's fitting into our budget? Are we putting into a certain line item? And it's all coming after we already submitted our budget, so.
Which is gonna affect.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna affect. Yeah, it's gonna affect the bottom line, it's gonna throw off the 19% for mandatory purchasing. So I'm trying to get it figured out and where it's coming from. And, yeah, so I wanted to give you guys a warning that that is, that is something that they're working on. And, yeah, it's, it's kind of up in the air, because I haven't been able to talk to the accountant yet to see, see where everything is at. But I was, they, they had mentioned doing something like this before and it sounded like it was going to be kind of a, you know, a nominal fee. That, you know, this might have been a good idea to kind of centralize everything, but I wasn't expecting $365 a month.
If, if you hear back from the accountant that it is supposed to come out of the library budget and you have to redo everything, do we have to meet again to vote?
I don't think so, I don't think so, because I think if they plug it into our, I, I'm not quite sure how it works here, I've never had to change our budget here. If they have to edit something, I mean, I think it's gonna go to town meeting anyway. So, I mean, I think Laura has the ultimate power to kind of edit and change the line items as needed, as they sometimes need to do for like salaries or things like that. So it was a little unexpected after we'd already submitted our budget, so. So yes, 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 so as soon as, as soon as I can get ahold of her, hopefully I'll have a clearer picture for next month as to what we're, what we're looking at.
And they set the dates for budget review for next month?
Yes, I can't, I can't remember off the top of my head what ours was, we're the second, the second day.
Okay, it's March 5th and then two weeks later, something, whenever that's second.
Both my stuff is, you're like right after I come, sorry.
Oh, dude, don't know.
The first one's the 5th and this one's two weeks later.
Right.
Saturday, the 19th at 8:45.
Library.
And that's March 19th?
Yes.
At 7:45?
8:45.
8:45.
AM. That's, that's all.
Alright.
And it's hybrid, so it could be zoom or in-person.
Used to have our cultural council meets, complaining.
Yeah, cultural council right on after all, sorry.
Alright.
That's gonna be. That's gonna be.
So if there are no more questions about the HVAC technology, I have, I made copies of the interlibrary loan policy. The, the two on top are what I wrote up, the two on the bottom are what we currently have. Basically what this is, is we have through the Massachusetts library system, we can request items if they aren't in CW Mars and they aren't in the Commonwealth catalog, which covers Massachusetts. We can request things from out of state, so we have things shipped from, like I just got something from Texas, I mean, we get things from down south, Georgia, New York, so far and wide. But um, it's becoming more frequent that we're getting these requests as people kind of know that we have this option. So in the past, there's been no good way to handle this, you know, is, instead of submitting a bunch of $3 receipts to accounting, I've just been covering with charges myself, because it's been few and far between. But it's, as we've been getting more and more of these requests handled, like last time we went to the post office, it was $10. So it's, it's getting more and more frequent, so what I would propose, and that is the top two sheets, is that um, and I, I've done this at other libraries I've worked at, and it works pretty well. So we charge patrons, when an item, when they request the item, they acknowledge that they have to pay the shipping costs. The item is free unless the library charges, some like special libraries, if you're getting a really rare book, they'll charge you to borrow it, but that's another, that's besides the point, most don't. So when the item comes in, I take the shipping costs that it costs to get here and charge them that for shipping, so they pay when they pick up. We keep that money in an envelope and then when it's time to ship it back, I'll just use that money to ship the item back. And if there's any discrepancy, like if we overcharge them for whatever reason, you know, we'll reimburse them. But, and if obviously, you know, if it goes over by a couple cents, well, you know, whatever, we'll just eat the cost, but at least that way, then, you know, we don't have to, because I don't think it's ever been factored into anything, I don't know how they used to do it in the past before I started, but um.
I didn't even know we could do this.
Yeah.
I like, would have to be cash.
It would have to be cash, because.
Could you set up a Venmo?
That might be, I don't know what the town would go for that.
I'm just thinking, I think the last book I requested was from New York, and I never have cash.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, we can always let people know when they, like, I, I would let them know, hey, your item's here, this is how much it costs to ship, you know? You'll need cash to pick it up, so at least we can give them a fair warning, but um, yeah, we couldn't do checks or anything like that. I don't, I don't know if I'd be comfortably using a Venmo, to be honest, my husband does it all the time, I don't quite know how it works. I don't know if I'd feel good about having a library Venmo, that might be too, too much for us to keep track of.
From town account?
Yeah.
The town tries to use checks for everything.
Can't have those in that.
Checks, after you issued a purchase order, they don't use credit cards, they use purchase orders, which.
There's a whole other, the school does for disorders too, it's a hot mess, always.
Yeah, so that's, that's just what I propose as one, one solution to the problem. I mean, that's a great idea. And it's not really a problem, I'm, I'm glad we're, it's really nice that we're able to have the service, it's wonderful. Yeah. It's just, you know, the shipping costs add up, so.
Motion.
Postage keeps going up, thankfully we can ship everything library rate, so it's really relatively cheap, I mean, it doesn't, it's maybe a couple bucks for something, but but you know, when you, I think the last time I went back, I had four items to ship, which is, is great, I mean, it's a great service. But, you know, shipping is expensive, so essentially, yes, the item is still free, you know, but if you want it, you just have to, have to pay the shipping costs. And then me and my, my assistant director will kind of handle all this ourselves, so there'll be no, there'll be no confusion, you know, we'll have an envelope in the cash boxes at the front desk, so that, you know, if somebody comes in to pick it up, they just, we take the money, go see the envelope, sits there until it's time to ship it back. And then, you know, when we go to the post office, we'll keep track of all the receipts and everything, so we can tell if somebody was, you know, undercharged, be fined of 10 cents for whatever it was.
Can I make a motion to change the policy?
Second.
All votes in favor, Michael.
Hi.
Yes.
Cindy, yes.
Felden, yes.
And then I gave everybody a copy of the annual report, there's, there's nothing we need to, to vote on or, or anything like that, I just wanted to give everybody a copy of what we submitted for the, what did they call it, the town booklet? There's a word. Yeah, the town report, it's been a long day, so the town report, this is basically just what I wrote up. So we talked about all the brands, the number of attendees at programs, all the different special things that we do. And that was submitted to the town, so that will be in, and out when it comes out for budgets even. And the last thing on there was, I am just starting to put together the April 2022 for the annual survey, I'll come up with something and have it for the March meeting. And it'll, we'll have paper copies, I'll put it out on, on like Survey Monkey, so it'll be virtual and everything too, to just kind of get the widest, the widest reach. And then next year, starting in June, I'm gonna kind of start gearing up for our new strategic plan, so. Yeah, we'll, we'll probably need to do a bigger, more in-depth survey sometime down the road, but for April this year, I don't think, we didn't, we did, we didn't do one last year. Yeah, we decided to skip last year, so we'll get back on it for April this year. So I'll have something to show you guys for the March meeting, just kind of a draft of the survey.
Sometimes you could use the old one that's used in prior years and then tweak that.
Yeah.
Or subtracting or whatever.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna reinvent the wheel, we'll just tweak what we already have and, and send it out in paper, virtually, to just try to get the, the biggest number of responses possible.
Yeah, typically it's anywhere from 100 to 125 responses.
Yeah.
In Southwood.
Your staff meeting, you said that's gonna be in the morning?
Yeah, we're gonna do that next Wednesday morning on Zoom.
Is it possible to send us someone, just so I could go in and just, I don't know all the new staff, basis to names, and just kind of thank them?
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it, I'll send it to everybody and who's ever interested and able to join, yeah, so it's, it's February 16th. 11:00 AM, the 16th is next Wednesday, right, I do have the current date, yes, okay. Yes, I'll send everybody the Zoom link and whoever can come in and say hello.
Yeah.
And that's great, and if you can't, I know it's, it's right in the middle of the day, most people are, yeah.
What time?
11, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's a great idea. Yeah, no, that's a great idea, Sammy. I think it would be, yeah, because we have some, some newer staff. I know, like, if you only come in in the evening, sometimes you don't see everybody, so. Yeah, that's great.
And this is my guy's favorite library, it's one of the libraries that would.
So.
I know. I'm like, I'm biased, but yeah.
Yeah. And, and that's, that's all I have. That's all I have. Next month, they'll have, I'll have a little bit better idea about the, the HVAC technology.
Well, it's only been two weeks.
I know, I know. Well, and it, you know, we, we met that night to vote and then it was that Friday that I got this information and then yeah. So we, we need to get that, that straightened out, but we have time.
Is everything good in the basement?
Yes, yes, thank you. Everything's been wonderful in the basement. We aren't gonna load it up with stuff again. I know that's your first instinct is like, oh, storage space, it looks clean down there. It's wonderful. And the trust, not the trustees, the friends, they just bought us two big pop-up canopy tents, 12 by 12, so we can do some things outside in the summer. And they bought us, they're buying us a power washer for the library of things and they bought us a metal detector. So I'm gonna have to go out in the yard to figure out how that works.
There is a local guy who does metal detecting and he'll come and do programs. Like, he came to just do it with my kids one day.
Do you know his, can you send me his name?
Yes, if I look on.
When it comes to you.
Friend of the library bought two canopy tents for programs.
Yep.
And they brought a metal detector and a power washer.
Yes.
There's someone that found this civil war thing at all of Columbia.
Yeah, that's, it's him. He's really cool. His daughter or stepdaughter is the same age as my son. And like, they hung out when they.
Because I think he don't hear what he found.
Oh, right.
He did a program at the museum.
Oh, yeah. That would be cool to have them come and do a demo, because I honestly don't know how they work.
Yeah, let me look at it.
No, it'll, it'll come to you. You can, you can pass it along.
Metal detector. Power washer.
Okay. And that is all I have for tonight, because we were here not too long ago, so.
We don't need a motion to return. You do.
And I'll make a motion if we need to.
Sammy, second.
All votes in favor?
Hi.
Was unanimous.
Okay.